All this means to order, if you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and one in his.
If you'll please bow with me, your heavenly father, we just thank you, Lord, for the ability to meet tonight and do the business of the city of Levelland. We just pray that you would keep your hand upon our city, Lord, keep us safe, keep our first responder safe, Jesus. And we just pray that you would bless us tonight, you would just give us open hearts to receive, you would just give us clarity of mind as we make the decisions for the city of Levelland. We thank you for all the blessings that we have, and we just praise your name in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Next, we will be doing a proclamation for the World Polio Day from the Levelland Rotary Club. Start, and then we'll do picture of hands. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite to take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe, and whereas the Rotary motto, service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in nineteen eighty-five launched Polio Plus, and in nineteen eighty-eight helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by ninety-nine point nine percent since nineteen eighty-eight, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas today Rotary has contributed more than two point two billion U.S. dollars in countless volunteer hours to protecting more than two point five billion children in a hundred and twenty-two countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional fifty million dollars per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional one hundred million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and whereas the efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and the additional materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than ten billion dollars to the effort. And whereas there are over one point two million Rotary members in more than thirty-six thousand clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in the local communities and abroad. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Breann Buxton, mayor of Levelland, hereby designate October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four as World Polio Day in Levelland, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. In official recognition, wherefore, I hereby fix my signature this twenty-first day of October twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
Stand up, come on over.
Yeah, we'd love to have a picture with you guys.
I don't know where everybody is.
Oh, yes, you are, Joe.
We do appreciate you, dude.
Thank you for coming and all that.
They're getting a little close to me being.
I wasn't prepared.
Poor choice on my part.
One leg in the air too.
All right, here we go. Thank you so much.
All right, now we'll have our statements from citizens. And first up, we'll have Ms. Jan Simnacker. We'll begin with, and I think most of y'all have done this before, but we have three minutes. If you'll please state your name, your address, and we will try to kindly let you know when your time is up. And thank y'all for coming. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jan Simnacker. I live at three oh seven Cactus. And once upon a time, about four or five years ago, I ran a little small rescue transport to help the Levelland shelter. In that time, I've transported close to eighty animals to Colorado and other areas, largely at my own expense. But then the ACOs changed, communication and cooperation became impossible, and I switched to private transports because I just couldn't do it. I used to feel welcome when I went to the shelter, and then all of a sudden, I was treated like an intruder. I gave a very similar speech to this about four years ago, by the way. Recently, my daughter-in-law wanted to adopt some dogs. I said I'd go get them. I called, I left messages, I went out there four times. Nothing worked, no one around, no callbacks. I finally drove out there and sat until five P.M. Figured someone would show up at quitting time, and I was right. I got pups. How can anyone reclaim or adopt an animal when there is no one there and no communication? It's very frustrating. We had a bad freeze a couple of years ago. I reported a dog tied up outside three different times before something finally got done, or he chewed through his rope and got away. I don't know which. For the state of Texas, the tie-out method was illegal, and I pointed this out every time I called. When I first spoke to the council about shelter issues, we were assured there would be change. Seems there's been nothing but stalling. People have requested the shelter be taken out from under the police department. It's still there. People want the shelter to have its own budget so that donations don't go to the general fund. It doesn't. We're still under the police department. People have requested a change in management. Nothing has happened. We have had committees, we've had talk, we've been told something will happen. It never does. I'm well aware of the, as any rescuer is, you cannot save them all. But how many more have died needlessly because the very people that would save them can't communicate with the shelter? It's almost like it's too much bother to network them to rescues or keep adoption appointments. The citizens want change, not another committee and not another bunch of meetings. Meetings have been done to death. Committees have been done to death. Stop the chatter and do something. Totally unrelated topic. Can we please do something about hot riders up and down Cactus before someone gets killed? I can point out cars. I can tell you where they live. One of them doesn't even have mufflers. He goes past my house and everything in the house shakes.
Thank you, Ms. Simnacker. Appreciate you. We're out of time. Thank you so much. Next up, we will have Ms. Sherry Hatchet.
My name is Sherry Hatchet. I live here at two thousand and three Rice Avenue. I would just want to open with a quote. I am the voice of the voiceless. Through me, the dumb shall speak. Till the deaf world's ears will be made to hear. The words of the wordless are weak. I am my brother's keeper, and I will fight his fights and speak the words for the beast and the birds, till the world shall sit up and do right. This is a quote from Ella Wilcox, and she was paraphrasing a message that Jesus Christ had given. Anyway, since I was here last, I decided to educate myself and see what some of the more important issues were that the people felt needed to be addressed. And I got feedback in space. The first most important thing that people seemed to want was to have the shelter open at least for a few hours on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, when people were off work and could come and visit. And Mike and I can relate to that. We've been in real estate. And I can tell you, if we were to tell our clients, I'm sorry, we only work Monday through Friday, nine to three, we would lose business. The second thing that was mentioned was for the shelter to have at least one person present and to be open during posted office hours. Imagine the frustration one must feel to go to a business, not find anyone there, or even worse, to have them there and not open the door. That would be frustrating. Well, I don't have to imagine it. It happened to me, and it happened earlier this month when I just happened to stop by the shelter to check on one of our pregnant dogs. And sure enough, the van was there, so I knew somebody was there, but the door was locked, so I immediately started knocking. And I was knocking, and I was knocking. And finally, I just said, oh, they're probably busy out back, you know, running the cactus. So I went back, and nobody was there, so I came back around, and the door was locked, so I started knocking. I knocked for thirty minutes. I want to do this the entire time. It's only got three. I did it for thirty. Finally, someone finally showed up. When he did, I said, oh, my God, are you sick? You need to go home. No, I'm fine. Where have you been? In the bathroom. I said, do you know that I've been here thirty minutes?
I'm sorry, Natasha, I'm sorry, we're out of time. Thank you so much.
Well, you get the message. You need to be open and the door unlocked during those hours. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Jill Pitt.
Thank you so much for allowing all of us to speak today, but I'm Jill Pitt. I live at one eleven Tanglewood. Again, here talking about the shelter. So I think when we talk about change, we need change, we need change maybe to go back to where the shelter, it was a team effort on the volunteers and the ACOs part to get the dogs out of the shelter. After our last talk and coming in front of the city council, even more barriers were put up. We now are not allowed into the dog room as volunteers. And you get the standard answer. Someone's going to talk about that here in a minute when you want to find out the disposition of a dog. Okay, so we've kind of gone even more backwards. And one of the main things that needs to be done, of course, for change is to remove the barriers. So allow the volunteers back into the dog kennels so that we can check on the dogs, see how they're doing, see who's there, who do we need to post. Also be open for a few hours on those weekends, on Saturday and Sunday. I could have got a dog out yesterday afternoon. I called all the numbers that I could, never got a response. We ended up, a friend of mine met me this morning, and we got the dog out. So that's a problem that we don't have those hours. We're losing adoptions. And we're losing volunteers that could help with the dogs on those days too. And also be transparent, you know, if you're not, it makes everyone suspicious. What are you hiding? You know, why can't we go certain places? Why can't we be told the truth about dogs? And also, of course, vaccinate dogs on intake would help a lot too, to remove that barrier, to get them adopted and into rescues. Post animals on intake and keep that page updated. Sometimes they're still waiting, and there's a lag time of two or three days where dogs are not posted on the Facebook page. They might could go home if they were posted. That would help with space. So now, you know, now that we're talking again, what other barriers are going to be put in place? We put the dogs and cats more at risk for speaking out, and it really scares me, honestly. Does it hurt us? Hurts our hearts, but it really hurts the dogs. So thank you for your time.
Next, we'll have Ms. Skylar Eisenberg.
I am Skylar Eisenberg. I live at one oh five East Cameron in Sundown. How do you grieve someone you never met? I saw Abram the day they brought him into the shelter, or should I say pound. He looked like a bear rug, lying there sprawled out. He'd been tranquilized. Why, you ask? Because he was from the county. He did not come when he was told. That's the least of it. Nobody can judge a dog on first impressions, right? Well, I fell in love with that tranquilized bear, impatiently waited for an owner to claim him. Finally, pictures were posted of this bear, and wouldn't you know it, he was gentle, calm, loving, and kind. I asked about him at the Fall Festival. He was described as a great dog. He is gentle and quite a bit bigger than Mac. We had to tranquilize him, you know, because he was from the county, and we just didn't know how he would act. But yeah, he's been great. He's really calm. That was the description I was given of him at the Fall Festival. I specifically told the ACO, with Lisa Shannon as a witness, that I would pull him and Mac to save them from euthanasia if it came to it. Keep in mind, there were no updates on him at this point, and nothing mentioned about any of them being in danger. We lost a beautiful boy very unexpectedly in July. At seven years old, his spleen ruptured and cancer had metastasized everywhere. We've been heartbroken. Our children still miss him every day, and our remaining dog has been lost. We're navigating this hurt and picking up the pieces. We had a foster at that time, and since August, we have fostered seven puppies to save dogs at the Levelland Shelter. We currently have four fosters, so when I said I would pull them before they were killed, I was serious. When I saw Abram, even as the tranquilized bear, I knew that he could help us heal that missing piece from the hole that was created when we lost Wagner. He could fill that void that we'd been searching for, and we could give him a home, the love and the family he deserved. Finally, pictures of his beautiful gray muzzled face and wise compassionate eyes were posted, and he was up for adoption. Here's his listing. This is Abram, shelter number one zero zero two zero. He is an about five- to six-year-old Australian Shepherd male that is available for adoption at the Levelland Animal Shelter. He came into the shelter as a stray, and no one has come to claim him, so he sure needs a good home. He's a very amazing dog and loves everyone. He would make a great movie binge-watching or walking buddy. He sounds like the perfect dog, right? And he's living at the shelter because people let him down. I sent his posting and the photos to my husband, and he agreed that his description and age, he would be a great fit for our home. I started thinking of names for him, a new name for a new life. There was no shelter's full notice. There was no out-of-time post. There were so many dogs just pulled for rescue, many that had been there for a long time, weeks or a month, much longer than Abram was. Pregnant dogs, dogs with puppies, unsocialized dogs. I don't want any of them to die, but how do they choose? I called about Abram. We wanted to take our dog over to meet and bring him home. Abram was no longer at the shelter. Shocked, I asked if he was adopted. I was immediately hit with, we do not have to disclose whether a dog was adopted, rescued, or euthanized.
We're out of time. Okay, thank you so much.
The next one's going to finish.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Breann Rice.
My name is Breann Rice, and I live at five oh six Seventeenth Street. I was immediately hit with, we do not have to disclose whether a dog was adopted, rescued, or euthanized. All I have to tell you is that he is no longer at the shelter. I knew what that meant. Why would you not want people to know of an adoption or rescue? Why would you not want people to know of a success story, an older dog saved from the shelter, because that's not what happened? How do you look into the eyes of a completely healthy, adoptable dog that had been there less than a week and decide that his time was up and that he was the chosen one to make space? I am still heartbroken and devastated because I let him down. I did not get there or call soon enough to save his life. How can we make changes? What needs to be done to give these dogs a chance? Volunteers used to be welcomed at the shelter. The door was unlocked, and dogs could be walked, socialized, and networked to give them a chance at a life they deserve. They had the opportunity to know compassion and love, not just loneliness behind a locked kennel gate on a cement floor, surrounded by other confused and scared dogs with howls and barks echoing in a metal container. This is not a shelter. A shelter should be a safe, warm place. A shelter aims to provide more care and adoption opportunities. This is a holding cell for dogs, a cold, callous place to wait days or weeks before they are let down by humans one final time. I am mourning Abram. I have grieved his loss every day since that call. I miss the laughter and happiness that he could have brought us. I miss the feeling we could have had saving his life and him healing our hearts. I miss the walks we could have had and the cuddles we could have shared. Since originally composing this letter, Mac was also killed. Once again, I offered to foster Mac if he needed it. If there was any chance that he was in danger, I would have pulled him immediately. Mac was also tagged for rescue, and they still killed him, an adoptable, one-year-old border collie mix, gone forever. Please help us make a difference. Change needs to happen. There is no future for these dogs without it, until every cage is empty.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you.
Robert Perkins is next.
My name is Robert Perkins. I live at fourteen oh one South College Avenue. This is Maisy. Okay, on October the eighth, okay, I had a discussion with one of our animal control officers. Okay, I told her, okay, do not put Maisy down. She was in a hurry to get out of there that day. And so I said, I will come back tomorrow and get her. The next morning, her picture disappeared from the website. So I started asking around. I thought, well, maybe they took her down, okay, because they know I'm coming to get her. Okay, no, they put her down. Okay, a dog that somebody wanted, a dog that somebody had already said they were going to come get. And you've heard that story over and over. Okay, I, in the summer of twenty twenty-three, took about eight suburban fools of blankets, comforters, towels, wash racks, okay, that were left, okay, where I work, okay, by residents who moved out, okay, and I washed them, I dried them, I folded them, I put them in bags. And I took them out there to that thing that y'all call a rescue. It's not a rescue. It's a pound. Okay, I can't get in there either. They leave me standing out there, knocking on the door. Okay, you see the truck out in front. You should back off down the road and see them come out and get in and go off. But I have tried to get applications, because I had at one time twenty young people that wanted to come out there and volunteer with me. Okay, they wanted to come out there. I started looking for, I had one person that acted like she even cared that that's what we want. Oh, well, I got sent to the police department down there. I got one copy and was told, if you want some more, go make some copies. I'm a volunteer, and you're treating me like that? Okay, I agree. It needs to be taken out from under them. I have volunteered, okay, to bring my guys out there on the weekends, because I know they're working, I guess, long hours. Okay, I was told, well, I've got to talk to my corporal about that, and nobody's ever gotten back to me. Why is it out there where nobody can find it in the first place? It's out there in the middle of nowhere. Let's put it downtown. Let's go downtown and sip wine around with the dogs. Okay, let's let people see the dogs downtown. Instead of buying chemicals to kill them with, let's buy some two-by-fours and take these pups and put their pictures up and say, hey, if this is your dog, let us bring him home. It's okay, I'll come back.
Next, we have Ms. Camilla Weiserbach. I'm trying to butchering that, and I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Camelia, I live in La Bag, forty-six twenty-three Ninety-Fourth Street. And I'm with a very small foster-based nonprofit rescue. We use our own, we use our own pocket money and our time to save animals when we can. And we took whole animals from here, pets, from the shelter and successfully rehomed them. We are also in communication with other rescues and rescue individuals, because we feel that we are all part of the solution. We realize that Texas in general has a terrible problem with animals, and that is a complex situation, and it's economical, cultural, social, demographic. We know that cities are fighting limited resources, whether funds and personnel, we know that. They try to do best by citizens, taxpayers' money, to protect the citizens and also to give a chance to the animals. And that is a very hard balance. We know that. We recognize. We know in communities that are many irresponsible owners that just breed and drop animals all over the place. At the same time, there are other loving ones that do right not only by their animals, but they try to save more, and that is a force that is out there. And the more we tap into that, the more we transfer some of the weight from the city on the community, the better results we all have. We also know that rescues are always overwhelmed and closing intake, and still they bend backwards to make things happen when they can work in a common project. We feel that animals in a community are everybody's problem and therefore everybody's responsibility. And we want to be part of the solution. We know that the key elements for that are transparency, communication, and cooperation. If we have this, city benefits, citizens' benefits, animals' benefits, benefit. So my only message that I have, please allow us to be part of this, this solution. Please allow us to be included, to be seen, and for us to see, we cannot save an animal that we cannot see. So as long as we can be on the same page, everybody, the better result we'll have for everybody, everybody's benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Next is Ms. Lauren Klein.
Hi, thank you for giving me time to speak. My name is Lauren Klein. I live at ten thirty County Road One. Uh, my name is Lauren Klein. I live at ten thirty County Road One, and I live in Wilson. And I am from Saving Grace Rescue, a little bit outside of Lubbock in Lynn County. And one of our missions is to save dogs off of euthanasia lists in places that have very few outlets. Um, while my primary focus is usually Tohoka, I have pulled and rescued dogs from Loveland Animal Control over several years. Um, my recent experience with animal control here has been quite difficult. Um, when I want to tag a dog, I have a very hard time getting in touch with animal control. That's by phone, uh, by text, um, even by Facebook Messenger. Um, I'm too far to always come over here, so I have to rely on those things or someone who lives here to help me with that. Um, also, uh, due to practices that some are outside of their control, but also practices inside of the shelter. Uh, illness is an issue that I face when a dog comes into our care, um, from Loveland. I realize that this is hard for us all, uh, to navigate city animal control officers, rescues, uh, with the overpopulation that we all face. But with multiple hurdles at hand, um, from my perspective, there are two immediate ways to improve, um, the shelter. First, we need to vaccinate dogs on intake. Um, I realize that this is something that could increase the city budget somewhat. But that's something that I feel is imperative that needs to happen, um, to stop the parvom in December that's coming out of that shelter and in the community. Um, you could have community vaccination days. We did one in July. Um, that was a grant fund, but we vaccinated two hundred dogs in your community. The help is there. Um, we just need to promote it and get the vaccinations out in the community. Um, second, if the goal is to decrease euthanasia, then there needs to be way better communication with animal control. Um, with the community and the rescue partners. I realize euthanasia is going to be unavoidable, but my hope is that there's a better way to get in touch with animal control so that dogs don't suffer because of it. Also, a clear seventy-two hour euthanasia notice with the exact dogs and time would be extremely helpful for all of us that are trying to scramble to help the dogs that are here in your care. Um, it shouldn't be so hard for rescues or adopters to come and get dogs out of the shelter. There's dogs everywhere, so it makes us want to go somewhere else if it's too hard to help the dogs here. Um, I have advised Tohoka. I'm happy to do it here if you guys are interested. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Liz Farrell.
Hi, I'm Liz Farrell, uh, thirteen oh four Twelfth Street in Loveland. Um, sorry. People are frustrated. And I'm here begging you guys to see some change. There are plenty of people here that need to see results. And I'm so appreciative that we have so many members of the community here today. Transparency is a very common word that you heard this evening. Communication is another word you heard this evening. Accessibility, I think, is, is another word that you could hear this evening. Those three basic things cost nothing. It's basic business. We're lacking it. Your community needs it. This is a big deal. And, and I know you guys are tired of hearing about it, and we're tired of griping about it. But there's a change that can happen if y'all get on board and help us. Um, the dog that was mentioned that was euthanized was Mac. He was tagged late Friday evening because his post was still on the page. Apparently, he was put down earlier that week. But it's because his page, his photo was still on the page that allowed me to tag him as a rescue. That involved people out of state, that involved people out of, out of the city. It's a big deal to pull a dog from a rescue. If his page, picture hadn't been in there, I wouldn't have tagged him. It would have been no big deal. But it's just keeping your Facebook page up to date. But it caused this whole other kerfuffle, because when was he killed? Was he killed because he was tagged? And then I'm, I'm left with that guilt that I was three days too late. It's all avoidable stuff. But I really want to hit home that communication, the transparency, and the accountability, enough's enough. Help us, please. We're here to help you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our statement of protest. Um, next, we will have a statement of city address by our city manager, Mr. James Fisher.
Mayor, members of the council, and citizens in the audience, you know. Tonight, we're presenting a state of the city. I've been with Loveland for, for about a year now, and we've got a, a lot of great things going, but we've also, as we've heard tonight, we've got a lot of things that we need to, uh, get better at and do a better job of, of doing that as we move forward. And I'm gonna just kind of address that real quickly because it's in, in these notes. Uh, we have been listening, and we have moved the budget to a separate department, and that's where it is. Um, council authorized funding to, for a feasibility study for potentially of a new shelter. So we are making steps, and I know we need to be faster in doing those, and we also need to be doing more, and we're trying to continually do better, but we'll, we'll keep moving on this. Um, as we, uh, look at, uh, the state of Loveland and where we're at, just want to remind everybody of our mission is to ensure high quality uh, of life for our citizens and visitors through, uh, effective and, uh, efficient growth. Uh, we are a growing city, having a reputation as an attractive, progressive, forward-looking community with strong committed leadership. A city where services are delivered in a friendly, competent, pro-business manner. And a community which takes pride in having an excellent quality of life, of being a friendly, clean, vibrant, positive place to raise a family and to own a business. In other words, we are striving to be the preferred community of the South Plains. How do we make this happen? Um, our customers are of, of the highest quality to our customers internally and externally. Always need to continue to make sure we do better in that. Dependability in our service and commitment to our customers, trustworthy integrity in our words, actions, and deeds. Uh, we've been busy in, uh, this past year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Our employees are our greatest resource. City Council uh, recognize that in preparing the FY twenty-four budget and authorizing a pay adjustment for our employees and, uh, taking care of them as well. We've also, uh, in doing this, we've hired a new finance director. We've hired a new human resource director. Uh, we promoted our municipal court clerk, uh, to our municipal court judge. Uh, we were making some positive steps, uh, in personnel. We had two retirements, uh, this, this coming year. Uh, we've got a great, uh, interim uh, in, in both, uh, departments. In the police department, uh, Captain McDonald has taken the lead. Uh, Captain, uh, Lopez is also assisting her in the interim area. And, um, within our, our fire department, uh, Chief Patty, uh, is serving as our interim fire chief. Uh, if we could convince her to stay longer, I think we would all try to do that as well. She has been doing a phenomenal job um, during the past year. During this time period, we also, uh, received notice that we, uh, received funding from the twenty fourteen Texas Forest Service, uh, grant. Uh, so we've ordered a new brush truck. Uh, that truck when, uh, was applied for in twenty fourteen was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it has come out now to about three hundred and sixty, but we have moved forward with that, and we are using ARPA funds to help make up the difference between the two pieces. Um, we silcoated approximately hundred and sixty thousand square yards of city streets. Uh, we began the engineering work on a new wastewater treatment plant groundbreaking in early twenty twenty-five. Uh, an airport lighting project to make our airport more visible at night to increase the economic viability of that. Uh, was approved by aviation. It got stalled through the federal funding process, but it is back on track and moving forward. So hopefully that will get underway soon. And then the council recently awarded the bid for the landfill cell construction um, for out at our landfill, but that is continuing to be a challenge out there as well. Um, we had, uh, an incident at the end of May that, uh, brought out the best in our community. Uh, we saw the worst, we saw a lot of damage, we saw a lot of people, uh, get hurt. But thankfully, no one, uh, was critically injured during the incident. We also had a great community response, over two thousand hours, and that could probably be even higher, because we had a bunch of people that helped out without ever logging in. Even though Cole was chasing them down and, um, trying to do everything he can to get that, uh, uh, love Loveland, a great community resource, uh, took on the responsibility of recovery, and, uh, they've been doing a phenomenal job, uh, with that, and Cole, we'll talk about that later when we give an update on the um, storm recovery and with all of our filing of forms with FEMA. The storm also showed us vulnerabilities of the city and the resources and training that needs to take place. We saw places where we definitely, uh, need to be looking at um, generators to put in various buildings, because we didn't have them, so that, um, we need to get those done. We also looked, um, if you look where the fire department, I think the long-term plan has to build additional public safety facilities in that area, and I think uh, my recommendation is we don't do that, because when we saw those straight line winds, we could lose all of our public safety in, in one spot, so we need to make sure that they're, uh, spread out. We also need to make sure that we continue with our training as city staff and, uh, city council that, um, we're prepared for whatever life throws at us. Um, I think we were very blessed that, uh, the mayor and the mayor pro tem camped out in, in the emergency ops center uh, for as long as they did and did whatever, um, needed to be done, but provided the support and the resources uh, that we needed as staff in making the decisions, and, and I, I can't thank them enough uh, for doing that, because they made my job extremely easy, and they made, uh, Cole's job a little bit easier. He, he had the brunt of this thing. Opportunities to excel, uh, the city centennial is gonna be coming up in little more than a year. And so in January, we're gonna be appointing a, a, a city centennial uh, committee to start working on that and putting together some ideas and things that we would like to see as a city to honor our past and prepare ourselves for the next one hundred years as well. So that will be coming before the council uh, in January to appoint that group. You will also, in the January meeting, have a city charter review. Our charter is our constitution. It outlines the way that we govern. Uh, our charter was last looked at in nineteen ninety-two, so there are definitely a lot of things that need to be done to bring our charter in line with state law and other things like that. I believe our city attorney is working on that uh, as we speak, and hopefully we can, uh, move that forward. One of the new ideas that we, we want to do, uh, and you'll see this here, is called Loveland Lessons, and beginning the first Friday of every month, starting in December. Uh, the first one will be at City Hall, and then after that, we're gonna find places that we actually go out. But have the opportunity to go out and visit, uh, with our citizens, with our businesses. Hear their concerns, hear, um, just various things going on, but also give us the opportunity to tell our story. Uh, find opportunities that we potentially can serve our citizens better and, and do things like that. Um, I've asked the mayor to attend those when she can, and when she can't. Um, we will be, uh, recruiting other members of the council to, to come to those as well. Uh, because I think that they're important, that, um, we get out of City Hall and get out to the public and be able to meet them where they're at. So we, we will be looking for ways to do that. Our boards and commissions, uh, this, we are very fortunate. We've got a lot of people that serve our community, that take care of our community. Um, one of the things, and you'll be seeing this in your November packet, is a kind of a job overview of all of our boards and commissions, what they're responsible for. But also creating a volunteer training opportunity that our boards and commission members need to attend, so they can understand um, their responsibilities as board members. And then this will also be creating where the council appoints the board members to our various boards and commissions. Right now, uh, several of our boards kind of say, this is who we want on there, and they send it up to council. Uh, council should be appointing the boards and commission members within our community. So that will be, uh, coming to you guys as well. As I said earlier, uh, the animal services shelter feasibility study, uh, we were putting that together to get out and get bids, to get busy on this, so that we can look uh, for better ways to have a facility that, uh, serves our community, uh, serves the animals within our community, and that we can do a better job, uh, in this area. We're also looking at a swimming pool feasibility study to where we, we're gonna look at our existing facility, see if the bones of it are good, and if they are, can we do some things in that area, uh, to make it even better where we're at. And economic and community development, how can we best utilize the sales tax dollars to assist our current business owners? Invest in our communities, enhance existing amenities, and attract, train new businesses. Our Community Development Corporation and our Economic Development Corporation, both funded by sales tax. And I know, uh, there's been discussions, formal and informal, about how do we better utilize those dollars? Do we create, uh, one board that utilizes those dollars? What can we be doing different? We've made a significant investment in the rail park. Uh, and we're looking at building, uh, in partnership with South Plains College, a truck driving school. Um, but what can we be doing to help our existing businesses in town? What can we be doing to put dollars back into our community that will help our community, uh, be even stronger? Uh, the LCDC, uh, the Community Development Corporation, um, has always, um, been very focused on the oxy in other park areas in town. But what else can we be doing a little bit differently to, to help our community, uh, be the preferred community within the South Plains? The guiding principles that, you know, we are, we are trying to adhere to and trying to follow, and it's always something that we step back and see how we're doing on it. We don't always get it right. But I will tell you that we're trying our absolute best. And the thing that I always make sure that, that we do is that we always take the high road. There's no exit ramps. Um, public service can be tired, can be trying. People sometimes will get in your face and scream and yell, and, um, we have to be better. And we have to listen to their concerns and listen not to respond, but listen to understand, and that's what we're gonna be trying to do every day. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but, you know, we've asked our employees to be professional, be kind. Uh, not only to the public we serve, but to each other that we work with on a day in and day out basis. Be on time and be dependable. Um, we've got to make sure we're doing that across the board, and we've got to make sure we're available, uh, to the public. Um, be an example for others to follow and be the reason that someone wants to come to work. We are our best recruiters. And we've got to have this place to where people, um, are excited about working and other people want to come work here with us. Um, lead and serve with integrity. Just kind of wrap this up. Uh, my vision as your city manager should lead with integrity. Serve with honor, be humble, to develop a dynamic flourishing community where citizens and guests thrive. Collaboration is nourished, and creative ideals are endless to make Loveland the preferred community in the South Plains. We have an absolutely awesome community. Y'all know this. Uh, I have been here a year. There's been a lot of great things that we've done. There's a lot of great opportunities sitting out there before us. We have a great opportunity from listening to our guests tonight to make our animal services better than it is today. We're gonna seize that opportunity. I know, uh, disappointed some folks. But we're gonna continue to step back, taking notes with this, and what can we do differently as a city to make this better? And as long as we're willing to improve, as long as we're willing to change, we're going to be a better community. So, questions from council?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for the hard work that you do. Our first item on the agenda is to take, consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, October second, twenty twenty-four special meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting, and the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes.
From all of the meetings?
The second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. The second item on the agenda will be to consider and take necessary action on the annual service agreement with the Level and Chamber of Commerce for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. That's funny to think about.
Mayor and council, this uh item before you is kind of a housekeeping item. We have an annual contract with the Chamber of Commerce for them to provide services. Um, utilizing the hotel occupancy tax funds. Uh, they utilize those to promote tourism, a lot of great community events. Also, within this agreement, um, they um. Coordinate or keep leveling beautiful operations. Uh, the city, the community is very fortunate that Mary Siders. Is um at the chamber and taking care of us. She's a tireless advocate for our community. And I would recommend approval of this agreement uh that is before you this evening. And the piece of paper that went out is attachment B to the contract that just got left out. I don't know if Ms. Mary has anything she wants to add.
Should you continue support?
Let's grill her.
She's ready looking.
I think Mary does an outstanding job with the type of rigor, Jake. And we are blessed to have her here.
Great, and this next year is going to be amazing moving forward. So many opportunities. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the annual service agreement with Level and Chamber of Commerce for the fiscal year twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation. Regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway for the twenty twenty-four Christmas on the Square Festival of Lights. Hi Kelly.
Hello.
Y'all have any questions for me? It's pretty much standard except the parade route has changed a little bit to keep our kiddos and our um floats safe. Other than that, you'll see the same as we have in the past.
We think there's going to be plenty of room to stage where where you have them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe this will be even better. It might be exciting that this might be a a good change.
I hope so.
Change things and you go, that was better.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four. Approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway. For the Level and Festival of Lights and Christmas on the Square event.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Kelly, thank you so much for the hard work that you did.
Yes, thank you, Kelly. Look forward to this event. With that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action to issue order. To abate, repair, secure, demolish regarding substandard structure located at eighteen oh two ninth street, legal description, tramel one, level N block two, block five. Hi Joe.
Good job.
Good evening, mayor, councilman.
Have we seen this property before?
You have.
Okay, I thought so.
It was, it was tabled in a previous.
Okay, I remembered.
Uh. On July twenty-fourth, Housing Standards Commission met. And they considered action on a structure that had been identified as substandard. By the building permit and inspections department. The structure is located at eighteen oh two ninth street. Property owner and persons of interest have been notified with appropriate notices by certified mail. And placing notices on the substandard structure. Said notice was filed at Hocke County Real Property Records. The Level and Housing Standards Commission voted to recommend to the council to order the demolition of the standard, substandard structure on the above mentioned property. Uh, as as we already mentioned, uh, this item was tabled because we had an individual that was interested in purchasing this property from the owner. Um, we have recently found out from him that he still has not been able to get in touch with these owners, so it is still. Um, it still belongs to the original owners, so. We're here for, let y'all take your action on this item.
Nothing has changed, no improvements.
Andrea has the uh some slides if you want to refresh your memory on some of the slides.
You're going.
Yes, I need to read this. The title report shows the owners to be David and Chriselda Rodriguez. Hocke County taxi show to be in the names of David and Chriselda Rodriguez. Hocke County appraisal district records show to be in the names of David and Chriselda Rodriguez.
Obviously, no one's here to speak about that property tonight.
No.
Shame that somebody wanted to buy and do something with it, but just can't get a hold of the owner.
Cat toys?
Do they live in, do they live in town or they live out of town? The property money?
David and Chriselda.
I I don't know where they live.
You don't know?
Uh, Eli would probably know, have that information, but I don't.
Okay.
So he couldn't be here tonight, so.
The property didn't get that way overnight by any means. It's it's been overgrown for years and years.
Yes.
Years and years. I move to issue order to abate, demolish the substandard structure located at eighteen oh two ninth street, tramel one, level N, block two, block five. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Have a nice night. Next will be item number five to consider and take necessary action on an interlocal agreement with the Level and Independent School District regarding the student resource officers or the SRO.
Mayor and council members, this item is again another housekeeping item. We have a contract with the. Uh, Level and Independent School District to provide school resource officers. This agreement uh has been modified to ref- reflect the current status of officers in the schools at this time. This item has gone before LISD and I believe it's been approved.
Yes.
And we need to uh consider approval because it has to be in the state within two days, so.
Okay, well, good timing then. Well, we definitely can't do without them. Uh, those kids need them and thank God they're there.
Mayor, I move to approve the Level and Independent School District uh Resource Center Officers Agreement for the budget year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Motion? Yes, sir.
Where there's, there's something says, I have reviewed this. It's it's. Very standard, what we see in a lot of them, but just so everybody knows, um, there's no doubt one of my partners drafted this because they represent the school.
Absolutely.
I just want that out there, but we we look at these all the time. In fact, it's not even the only one we've looked at in the past week, so um. It is well done and in good shape. And as I told, the city manager lays out what our obligations are. And how we're compensated for those and those are the two most important things.
And it was updated with our new compensation plan.
Yes, ma'am.
You have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. Next item will be the item number six to consider and take necessary action on an oxy farm lease extension for well produce.
Mayor and council members, uh, again, another. Housekeeping item, this, the city has a lease agreement uh with Joe Bob Wells for the land right next to the Oxy Center. Um, and it's supposed to, supposed to be renewed if we want it or if they want it. Prior to October one, neither one of us contacted each other uh by October one. Uh, we've since been able to reach out to him and he said he would like it extended at least for another year. Uh, as y'all will, or you may not know. The uh Community Development Corporation is looking at expanding the oxy. Uh, that has not come before the council yet, but uh if. They move forward with it, council moves forward. Probably sometime within the next year to eighteen months, this land may not be available, so.
He has the pumpkin patch, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I love those pumpkins. But what I would like to say is once he's finished picking them, he always. Plows them all up.
He cleans up.
So nobody is out there trying to get what he left behind and on city property by the highway. That's what I've always appreciated. I move to authorize a one-year extension to the contract per the terms of the existing contract and authorize the mayor's signature once completed.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item will be to consider and take necessary action to award a bid for hail damage repair for the city of Level and B.
Mayor and council members, as y'all are aware, um, we had numerous city vehicles that were damaged by hail. Uh, TML Riskpool asked us to go out for bids. We received two of them. Um, one of the the company we are recommending to go with, um. Prinsley Dent, uh, we've had several employees that have used them and I think they helped us out in the past when we had some vehicles. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So uh, I didn't get a chance to use some of their professional references that they had. I called them. I didn't get any callbacks. Dealerships, if I'm not buying a car, they're probably not going to call me back, so. Um, we would recommend uh that we award uh this bid to uh Prinsley Dent and. Go forward.
That's a significant price to try. It sure is. And will we, they will not fix them on site. We will take them to them, to a shop.
We're going to have to coordinate on how we do that. Uh, some they might, I I don't know. We're we're going to work through that. Be best if we could do some here, but I don't know if we're going to be able to.
Sure, the weather, there's a lot of factors there.
I move to award the bid, there's no words to read, the bid to Prinsley Dent for our. Hail damage repair for city of Landland vehicles. I went trolling fast enough.
In the amount.
In the amount of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and a three-month delivery date.
We have a motion in a second with that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. That'd be Michael's second.
The one that was giving her grief.
Next we will consider.
With the motion and took all of the second.
Okay, okay.
He's just interrupting what he's been doing.
We will consider and take necessary action on an agreement with Amoresco for water meter infrastructure. And this nice lady has waited a long time for this.
Mayor and council members, uh, if y'all recall, we began um this path back in February of asking Amoresco. Uh, to partner with us so they can go out and do a survey. They brought those survey results back to y'all September ninth. Went over it. We looked at the the price tag that was with it. Um, this isn't an expensive project uh for the city. Um. I think the council's been discussing replacing these meters for several years. And at one time, you know, we were around two million and now we're we're close to six. Um, the potential savings um for this should be able to uh cover our our cost in this, but this is not the real reason why we're doing this. I would say the the critical reason is it should help us manage the water that we have within our system. That we can manage what our customers are using and if there's a loss out there that we have a way to account for it. It also will help us help our citizens conserve water. Any of you that have been out here for a long time know that the aquifer is dropping considerably. Uh, we do have wells, uh, not we, Canadian River Municipal Water Authority has a pretty reliable system. But uh, we've also got Amarillo and Lubbock exploding in growth. There's a, if if you watch any of the news over the last couple of weeks, there's been several communities, several neighborhoods adjacent to Lubbock that are asking for help. Uh, for water because they can't get it um through their wells. So. This action with Amoresco, which they have been uh in an exceptional partner, they've been uh. Good at answering any questions staff has asked. They've helped us uh find articles that we provided to you guys to help you understand this better. Uh, I couldn't ask for a better partner in moving forward with his uh staff is. Making the recommendation that we move forward with this. Um, I will tell you that, you know, we may, as we go into next budget year, we currently have a one dollar uh fee with, that's our water. Uh, capital fee. Water improvement fee and we may need to adjust that just to help us make sure we cover this, but also. If we don't need it, we can continue to use it for other water projects that we may need to be looking at as we move forward. But that's a discussion as we go in to uh next budget year if we want to adjust that. But uh, I'm here to answer any questions. She's here to answer every question and um we are recommending approval and Joe's here to.
Fisher, this has been on High Center a long time. I'm glad to see we're proceeding with the. The contract here. You know, this is.
I agree with Bill. I think beyond our people, water is our most precious, the most precious resource that we have in the area where we are. In the country and it's going to be such a factor moving forward. And as Mr. Fisher mentioned, there are communities in the news very close to us. That have just recently scrambled to make a five-year water deal with the city of Lubbock. They have five years for a plan for water. We don't, thank God, we don't. But this is, this system will help us manage that most precious resources that we have. It's going to help us determine who, where, where we're losing it, manage it and take better care of it. And we're, we're supposed to be good students of that. So that's, that's where I sit on the meter project.
In in this agreement, I had a couple of questions. Page one, page seven, it talks about our financing. And it just says that in this, this agreement is now, uh, there are no ways, there's no contingency on there. If for some reason we can't get financing on this, we're still bound by this contract. In section three, subsection B.
Yes, sir.
If something happens to our financing, we're still obligated to resecure with our financing and all of that kind of stuff.
Yes, sir. I I. I feel very confident in that what we'll see in our savings in our, in our first couple of years, we're going to be good, but that's why when we go into budget, we need to look. At that water improvement fee and potentially adjusting it two or three dollars because it's a dollar now.
Sure.
Just so we could put that money over there.
We had to finance that six million. And then pay it with that. Do we have that financing ready to be in place? Because we'll have to pay them upfront, won't we? Are we paying them out through? Through our budget? Am I missing that? So we've got to write them a check for it. Where do we get those funds?
Trying. Trying to remember where that that piece was because I went through it, but. My brain's foggy at this moment, so.
You got a lot to do.
We're financing that through Hilltop, correct? Hilltop, correct?
But that's already in place. That's that was one of my.
Mine, you're saying.
Should have called you earlier today because I had a question, but I didn't get it till late.
I know Hilltop has been working on this as well as our other infrastructure stuff. So.
So what what will happen is as we get closer, because that's all market driven, um, they will start moving to finalize. Those and they will be here to present that to you and and don't want to get into. An overly. Complex discussion on financing, maybe. There there's state law out there. I mean, if y'all are not able to secure the financing, what's the chances of that are slim to none. Um, and and you could not finance it. I mean, there's state law that protects the city.
No, I'll just.
No, no, I I mean, it it says what it says, but um, that there, there's a provision in there that that protects governmental entities, not a, not a provision in the contract, a provision in state law. But I do not foresee that being an issue and if there was any hesitancy, I mean, you know, we we work with so many uh local governments that um. I've never, I've really never seen an issue, but when we foresee issues, they are telling us, you need to do this, you need to adjust this, you need to get this number in place so that we can get. A better rate, um, but with um. So with the tax base that y'all have and, you know, as y'all have heard me say many times, y'all play so much bigger than you are. A lot of that's the the college, a lot of it's just the the highways that go through here. Um. But that, that I'm guessing, I mean, if I'm wrong, you can kick me under the table, um, but. That now comes in.
And and the reason it's stuck after me is like, in my line of work, we always have an amendment or an uh. An addendum to to have an out in case somebody's financing falls through. Uh, also on page eleven, it talked about that, uh, if there's a substantial increase in cost, that would, that that uh. You guys can go up. Has there been a substantial increase in cost? Everything is pretty much current, correct?
Yes, it is. Um, that clause was put in there.
But we're good with this, these numbers.
And I can tell you, in talking to other cities, they've done business, if there was an adjustment, Ameresco was very quick to say, hey, this is what we thought. This is where it is. And been very good at communicating through all of that.
Those are the couple of things that just pop out to me as I kind of skimp through here.
Mayor, I would move that the city council authorize the mayor and or the city manager to execute the necessary documents, including the performance contract notice to proceed and any other related documents for an agreement with Ameresco to install a master meter harmony, advanced metering infrastructure, the MI system to allow for remote reading of the water meter's data.
Put motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five authorizing matching funds for an airport layout plan.
Mayor and council members, if y'all recall in July, we authorized sending a letter to them. They now want a resolution. Now, the guy that we sent the letter to is no longer with Tech dot aviation, so the letter didn't go to the funding sources. So now we have to send a resolution and then I'll be sending this to the county with Judge Baldruce to work it through the system there.
We'll do whatever they need to get that project done. It's going to make an impact.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five authorizing matching funds for an airport layout plan with narrative and obstruction survey and authorize the city manager to execute the next year, the necessary documents.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next item is to consider and take necessary action to approve a five-year service agreement with Blue Layer IT Solutions for operations and maintenance of security systems at City Hall.
Mayor, members of the council, you do not have this contract in your deal and deals with security issues, so you did not place it in there for public review. This item allows for security cameras in a security system within this building. It's approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. We will be using funds from ARPA to, to pay for this. And once this facility is done, we're going to be starting looking at other facilities throughout the city to get camera systems. This system will allow, even have an app, employees can download, will allow them to access all of the cameras around this building before they walk out. So if it's late at night or on a weekend, they can see what's going on. It will also provide a keypad or badge pad at this back door. So we no longer have keys. They could just swipe it. It allows them to get into the building faster. So I think this will give us a better view all the way around our building of what's going on and take care of, of our employees and our customers that visit our buildings.
Definitely not an eight to five job, so.
And the reason this is before you too is that there is a five-year service licensing agreement with them and anything over a year must come before the council.
I move to approve a.
I was just going to say in a day's time, I mean, in day and time, we, we have to have.
Absolutely. In this agreement, I'm, I've seen it my same place of employment. It's taken agreement from Blue Layer.
I move to approve a five-year service agreement with Blue Layer IT Solutions for operations and maintenance of security system at City Hall.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, it's going to be an update on the weather incident of May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Cole, is this your time?
This is you.
Thanks, sir. I like that perk. That's. Yeah, fifty-five and older print. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was just going to give you an update on the storm that we have survived. I think an effort by, from the community as a whole and then our partners around us was not, would have happened otherwise. So high level overview, a long-term recovery committee has got the last stack of applications to review. And then they'll finalize all of the finances that, those finances will go before the auditor, county auditor, as per our emergency operations plan for the final review to make sure all the disaster money was spent appropriately. Long-term recovery committee lasts as long as the funding lasts. So once the last dollar for disaster that are earmarked for disaster relief, as soon as that last dollar is spent, the long-term recovery committee is discontinued at that point. So they're approaching that very quickly. They should have that wrapped up in the next month or so. As far as FEMA assistance, I wanted to give you all an overview because it was pretty incredible, the support we got from the FEMA side. It is not typical, as I put in the agenda memo, it is not typical for a disaster to happen like that for us to be impacted. It could level the entire city Loveland and we would not reach the state threshold to get FEMA's assistance. But the ingenuity from the state level to loop these severe storms that happened from April twenty-ninth all the way to June sixth is one disaster enabled a bunch of really small jurisdictions to be able to get supported by FEMA. And so in that, the individual assistance, which is private citizens, there was a hundred, no, one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven registrations of those, one thousand five hundred and forty-nine were validated. On-site inspections was one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine and returned and complete was one thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Individual and housing programs, so it helps anybody that has, is either uninsured or underinsured with necessary expenses and serious needs. There was one thousand three hundred and sixty referrals, nine hundred and eighty-six were deemed eligible and the total amount granted was five million, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one and seventy-nine cents. Housing assistance programs, which helps with repairs of homes, storm damage, there was one thousand three hundred and sixty referrals, four hundred and sixty-six were deemed eligible. And total amount given was three million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. The replacement program, which your house is deemed irreplaceable, or unreplaceable, they would give you the total payout, which was, there was one referral and one eligible, which was in the total of forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The rental assistance program for anybody that was displaced or they had to cover rent for another or temporary housing, there was eighteen referrals, eighteen deemed eligible and the total payout on that was thirty-three thousand, eighteen, eighteen dollars. So on the individual side, we've seen upwards from eight million dollars put back into the individuals' lives, a little over eight million dollars to, for little Loveland to get back. And so that is a tremendous, that is not typical, that is not something I, I would give that back to the state's ingenuity to tie the storms together, but also how fortunate we are. It is an election year and so not to say that any of this would be politically charged, but we're thankful for the assistance for our people. That's, I'm just going to leave it at that. On our side for the public assistance, so we have eight total projects going for the City of Loveland. There's one category E, which is for mild and moderate impact areas or structures within the city Loveland, which includes civic center, city shop, fire department. That project totaled was thirty thousand. Debris removal project is ongoing. Seems to be the gift that keeps on giving. There's some more work to, that remains. We're still on the way to getting all of the debris, debris picked up and sorted. And we've got a temporary burn site that's been approved by TCEQ. The deadline to get that burned is November eleventh.
Do you foresee that being a problem, Cole?
No, I've got a, a calendar appointment. If we don't get it scheduled and done by October thirtieth, then we can file an extension and that gives us up until twenty twenty-five to get it done. So I don't foresee that being a really big issue. It's just a little bit of logistics with TCEQ. Category E project for the city on vehicles. I know a lot of the, or un, the, not uninsured, but the recoverable would be the deductibles from the vehicles, which would be about twelve thousand dollars. So that's a project to get that money back. And all of this comes with an eighty-twenty match. So FEMA will pay eighty, we pay twenty percent of the project. And I'll get to a project here that I'm really proud of to help offset that. The category F project, which is going to be the communications tower and the equipment on the tower that's in the city park. Apparently, when I was probably in junior high, there was a trade of hands of that tower in the city park and it never made official registration paperwork with FCC. So we're working, the county apparently handed that tower over to the city for use and there was never any official documentation of that. There was never a transfer. So I don't know if it was a gentleman's agreement or none of the powers that be at the time are in place now. And so we're working with South Plains Communications to get that rectified so we can get that project updated. The cost of the equipment alone was twenty-five thousand. They did do the tower survey. Their tower is twisted. They are not for sure that they can get any of that repaired. They were, were a little worried about pulling on the guy wires to a point to try to, to untwist it, but they're not sure that the tower is going to be able to withstand that. And so we're getting official report back from them if we're going to have to replace that tower. Another project was pump station and waste treatment facility. There was damage to equipment in the total of about twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's one project we're going to for reimbursement of the water department building. We had a slip up in invoices and, and some pages got mixed up, but we're sitting at right about two hundred thousand dollars on a project for that. I believe the insurance payout was a hundred and eight thousand. And so the uncovered cost to the city would be about ninety-six, ninety-two thousand. So we're going to approach FEMA to get that reimbursement with the match. Emergency protective measures was going to be another project, which is category B, emergency protective measures. So all the overtime for all of the city staff that worked, that were not salary. So anybody, any officers or water department or street department that were covering streets because we didn't have any traffic lights, helping remove debris from roadways, any of the operations, their overtime was eligible for reimbursement. And so that totals eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. The last project that I'm particularly proud of was the volunteer hours tracking, which we can use for in-kind match. Effectively, we tracked two thousand and twenty-eight volunteer hours, giving the rate of nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour. We have an in-kind match already sitting on the books of forty thousand, five dollars and ninety-six cents. And so that will go in to help fund that twenty percent match for the city side for any, for all of our FEMA projects. An after-action review was completed after the incident, when Cole figured out what was up and what was down and left and right. More of a review what we did right, what we didn't get right and what we'll do going forward. I try to keep, keep those to an hour. I thought we had some really good discussions about what we did right, what we didn't get quite right, and then things we can do going forward. And I don't know if they've provided it to you, certainly not in this font. I think this is just a step below a billboard, but anyway, there's lots of areas for improvement. There's also lots of strengths. And so I think that is a based, I think that is a show of commitment that we have for all of the people that we have working here in the community members. And so I'd be glad to discuss with this with any of y'all, if y'all have any questions about what, what something means. I know a lot of it is public safety and FEMA jargon. And so that maybe, there's a lot of acronyms. There's a book on my desk for acronyms for the federal government. So and lastly, I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to, to lead this effort. I appreciate the support from administration executives, but staff and community members all have been tremendous force in helping this community recover. And that's all I have.
I don't think you need to thank us. We need to thank you.
Absolutely.
I was there. I saw it. I was scared, but I was there. And it was beautiful. What happened wasn't beautiful, but what happened the next day was.
Absolutely.
It was amazing. And we thank you for leading us through that.
Absolutely.
And helping us. And I don't know that anyone could have done it better.
I appreciate that. That, that is all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You had to talk about the disaster declaration.
Yeah, yeah.
Next item will be covered by the man in the blue suit.
Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on resolution dash twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six extending the May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four disaster declaration and continued activity of the Loveland Emergency Management Plan.
Mayor and council members, this item before you is our perpetual, just continuing to extend this. This is one reason why I want to get this stuff burned as fast as we can. I'm tired of extending this disaster deck. Cole's tired of dealing with it. So we're going to do everything we can to get it lit before November eleventh. Now, how long it burns after that, I have no idea, especially if we bring in the storm damaged tree trunks from the country club, it could burn for a little while.
We have a motion. Any questions? Should I ask that?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-six extending the May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four disaster declaration and continued activation of the Loveland Emergency Management Plan.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff citizen rights retention, items of community interest. No action will be taken on item thirteen.
Before I forget, Mayor, the Loveland Volunteer Fire Department are selling are selling these.
T-shirts. And the cost of them are ten dollars. Five goes to the fire department, volunteer fire department, and five goes to the Susan G. Komen Foundation. Hopefully Thursday comes around, we got enough. So we're just advertising city employees right now. We'll do a big group photo with that and, and go forward. So if you're interested in, in buying one, see Andrea. She takes only cash, so.
Wonderful. That's wonderful, wonderful momentum there. Love that project.
White pink.
You're going to buy one, aren't you? Because you're tough enough to wear pants.
Okay, we've received some citizen concerns regarding speeding on Avenue H, that's south part of town. We have notified LPD and they are also going to be reaching out to Hockley County SO, as well as DPS to see if we can slow these folks down. We also received some concerns about concrete dumping from a project in one of our neighborhoods. Joe Shad has already contacted the general contractor that's at that site and they said they would get it resolved immediately. So at the November eighteenth council meeting, you will have a park ordinance update. What you'll see is we've had a lot of policies for the parks department, but they weren't actual ordinance. So it's difficult to enforce or difficult to cite them if they camp in the RV area or other things like that. So that will be placed into an ordinance format. Trunk Retreat is the thirty-first downtown. Be there. It's a lot of fun. Ladies Night Out is November fourteenth. Employee Appreciation's the twenty-first. The industrial luncheon's the twenty-first. And as all of y'all know, Mike Honda will be here Wednesday. All of y'all are in the morning where he could leave by lunch, except for one that decided to squeeze in the middle of the afternoon to mess up the entire day.
My eight-year-old dad's got a doctor.
I thought it was me. I was thinking of what time did I?
Yes, sir.
Wait, November what?
Anything I'm missing, Jim?
What time, Andrea?
Six.
I have it. I'll look in just a second. Okay. And we are going into.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
City of Loveland, we're going to the executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duties discipline or suspension of a public officer or employee's city management at six twenty-four. Is that okay, Andrea? Hi. Hi.
At this time, Level 1 City Council has completed its executive session at 8:32 PM. With that, we are adjourned.